...2020 Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18. In the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board would be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrator/pages/how-access-virtual-meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428-POUND for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. The next meeting, first we'll have the approval of the minutes of July 14. Following that, we have two A and Rs to approve. At 6:35, we'll have a special permit public hearing regarding a special permit for the erection and maintenance of signs in excess of what is allowed in the bylaw. At 7:05, we expect to have a conceptual review, a review of a conceptual 55-plus manufactured housing community project proposed for 30 Main Street and 25 Fisk Hill Road. And following that, we'll have an introductory meeting for the proposed equine center, including a horse race track on property on the east side of Route 84, New England Horse Park LLC. After that, we'll have the town's plan update and then olden the new pieces and adjournment. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of July 14? Any questions, comments, corrections? If not, I'll take the motion to approve as submitted.
No moves, Russell.
Okay, Jeff, move. Russell, second.
Second.
Okay. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
I vote yes, Charlie. And Chris, since you went there, you'll abstain?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so one abstention. Very good. Okay, Jean, do you want to go over the A and Rs?
Yes. Would you like me to share the screen or you all have the plan in front of you?
I'm set, but if you'd like to, it's up to you.
The public, it might be good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just give us a minute and we'll do that. Okay, so the plan is up on the screen now. And Lenny Jalbert was the engineer who prepared the plan. He had a conflict this evening, so he's not present at the meeting. However, the property owner, Mr. Sexton, is here. You can see from the plan before you, this is property on Seneca Lane. And the proposal is to carve off a small portion that's labeled Lot B, which contains 3,118 square feet. And that's being transferred to an abutting property. And they're also carving off Lot A, which meets the dimensional requirements. The remaining land is Mr. Sexton's home, and that has sufficient frontage and area as well. So since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend the board endorse the plan as submitted.
Okay. Sue, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Dane?
Yes, I do. Where is Lot B going?
Lot B is going to the abutter.
Going to the immediate north?
I'm getting a lot of feedback on that.
Sorry, Jean, this...
Steve.
Hi, Jean, this is Steve Sexton. Do you want me to answer? They broke up a little bit, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Dane, we couldn't really hear your question. Could you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize. I understand it's going to an abutter. Is it the immediate abutter to the north of Lot B?
Correct. Yeah, to the east, just north. Yep, that's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Jeff? No questions. Russ?
All set. Russell, set.
Okay, great. Chris?
I'm all set too.
Okay, and it seems to me that it needs the requirements, so I'll take a motion then to endorse the A and R.
No moves. Sue?
Sue, good.
Sexton, Russell.
Russell, second. Okay, great. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. So Sue, do you want to sign that point?
Yes, I will.
So Steve, we will call you once Sue's been able to come into the office to sign the plan. We'll call you so you can pick up your Mylar.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, everybody.
You're welcome. Good night.
You're welcome.
Night.
You stopped sharing?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to share the screen with Lance from Pilot. Lance Champion actually will be presenting for Pilot for the public hearing. Brad Alsop is actually on the road, but he has called in. So Charlie, when you're ready...
Did you want to do the other A and R now or...
Oh, yes.
The Route 15?
Yes. I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. So Janay sent you all a copy of an A and R that was endorsed last year by the board, and that was for Silver Tree, and it was for the property on Route 15. So what they did is they combined several lots back into one tract of land. However, they never recorded that plan. So when they received their tax bill this year, they came in wondering why they were still being charged for several lots. So we looked at the registry and found they had never recorded the plan. So they could not locate their Mylar, and it's over six months stale now. So they need a new Mylar signed so that they can get that recorded. So if the board could just vote to authorize the clerk to sign the replacement Mylar, I would ask Ms. Waters to sign that when she comes in as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward. We're just really redoing what we did last year that unfortunately they didn't record it. So I'll take a motion then to authorize the clerk to sign the Mylar to combine the lots on Route 15.
Russell, come over.
And Chris, second? Okay, great. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Russell, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good.
Thanks for the reminder, Charlie.
No problem.
All right. Charlie, while you're setting up for the public hearing, we're going to take a minute and allow Lance to share his screen.
Okay. Okay, Sue, could you read the public notice, the public hearing notice for the Pilot?
Yes.
Yeah, great.
For the Pilot Travel Centers LLC. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 11, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall in Veterans Memorial Hall located at 308 Main Street on Tuesday, August 11, 2020, at 6:35 PM on the application of Pilot Travel Centers LLC, 5508 Lonance Road, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37909. The applicant requests a special permit pursuant to Chapter 22, Section 22.05.05 of the zoning bylaw regarding the erection and maintenance of signs in excess of what is specifically allowed in the bylaw. The applicant is proposing a freestanding sign of 89.57 square feet, where the bylaw allows the sign area of 50 square feet; a proposed pilot building sign of 42 square feet, where the bylaw allows the sign area of 30 square feet; a proposed subway building sign of 31.38 square feet, where the bylaw allows the sign area of 30 square feet. The applicant is also proposing a pilot logo on the gas canopy, which is in excess of the two on-premise signs per brand allowed under the sign bylaw; and a proposed welcome driver's sign above or adjacent to the building entrance. The property location is 400 Gaines Street on Sturbridge, Massachusetts. The Planning Board is electing to do this virtually.
Very good. Jean, do you have any other comments before Brad makes his presentation or...
Excuse me, yes. So the application has been sent out to staff for review, and no concerns were noted. And I have provided my report to the board, and I'm recommending approval of this special permit. I find that it's very consistent with the size and types of signage that was recently approved for the petro-gas location. And seeing how they're very close neighbors, I find it very consistent with the neighborhood. I also think with the amount of traffic that this Pilot Travel Center is going to attract, I think it's very important that travelers can see at a quick glance what types of services are available on the premises. And I think that the large, larger multi-tenant sign will accomplish that. And I have no concern with the additional branding requested by Pilot.
Okay. Does the proponent have anything they'd like to add or discuss on this? Go through the plan?
Yeah, this is Brad. I'm on the road. So Lance is handling everything technologically for me. For some reason, I drop off. He'll pick up. He's familiar with the application. What you'll see on the screen in front of you is the site plan, and you'll see five yellow boxes on there. The first, where Lance has got the cursor now, is where the freestanding signs would go. The second was on the gas canopy. That's where the additional pilot logo would go. So we are third versus two. Now he goes to the front of the building. That's where the pilot sign that is larger than the 30 square feet would go. And then where he is now is where the subway sign would be. And then the last one is the welcome drivers. And so we've got some pictures. We'll go through each of those as we go through the remaining slides. So Lance, you'll go to the next one. So this is the proposed, what I call freestanding multi-tenant sign. As you can see, it's... We don't have a color rendering of it, but the materials that are on the sign match the building finishes, so it'll tie in architecturally. And what we propose to do is put a pilot and a fuel pricer. There you go, perfect fuel pricer. And then you'll see the Subway, Cinnabon, NEAN, and PJ Fresh signs. Again, as Jean said, to let everybody know what services we're offering. All of these signs are externally illuminated per the code, and that will hopefully provide enough light to let everybody know where the pilot is, what the services are, so that they can make the appropriate decisions of where to turn in. So again, we would request an additional 39, excuse me, yeah, 39 square feet to be able to fit all of the tenants in in a sign that is still within the height restrictions. And again, I think the architectural features make it tie in nicely with the rest of the site. So if we go to the next site or next sign, there's several on here. We kind of lump them all in. So you'll see up at the very top, there's a... Well, okay, we'll do this one first. It's the pilot on the canopy. That's the additional. It's within the 30 square feet, but it's an additional sign. Those pilot above the two that are allowed, it would go with the one on the building and then the one on the freestanding sign. Directly below that, you'll see welcome drivers. This is a sign. It's kind of a... Well, again, it's a welcome to the professional drivers that are coming into our facility. It lets them know where their main entrance for professional drivers to enter the building is so that they can find the services that they need most easily. It is on the back of the building. It cannot be seen from the roadway, so it will be just, again, a friendly welcome to our guests. And Lance is showing there where it actually sits on the building. Again, you cannot see it from any roadways. We'll go back to the left there. That's the 42-square-foot pilot that would go on the front of the building above the primary entrance for gas customers. And the reason that we request the larger sign is that 42 square feet is kind of our brand standard, but it also provides a proportional sign for the area it goes in, so it doesn't get lost or look kind of weird with a large, open area around it. And really, the same thing we can say for the subway sign that's on the... That'll be the west end of the building. Just keeping within a standard subway sign. It looks very nice proportionally with the rest of the building, and I think it fits really well with the architecture. Lance, I believe we've got some color rendering of those signs as well that we could flip through. Again, you can see this is the sign that would be on the front of the building above the gas entrance, subway on the west end of the building. And then here's the gas canopy branding. Normally, we would have the pilot logo on three sides of the gas canopy and three sides of the diesel canopy. In this case, to try to comply with the bylaw as much as possible, we removed everything except for the logo on the side of the canopy that is most visible from Main Street. So again, it serves as a very good, visible reminder of passing motors. So probably this is where I go to the pilot to get gas. So with that, I agree with all of Jean's comments. I appreciate their thorough review, and Sue would respectfully ask for your approval. If you've got any questions, happy to answer those.
Very good. Thank you very much. And Jean, it's my understanding that design review has already approved these signs?
Yes, they did. What they asked was that the applicant return with any signs that the Planning Board grants a special permit for so they could come back with the final sizes that were approved and the final design of the multi-tenant sign. When they came to Design Review Committee, the multi-tenant sign was very plain, and they were asked to incorporate the materials of the building into the sign, which they have done here. So at the next meeting, we'll bring this final rendering back to design review.
Very good. Okay, I think I'll start at the other end of the list here. Chris, do you have any questions?
They can't hear me.
Nope, I don't. I don't.
Great. Russell?
No, I'm all set, Charlie. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff?
No question.
All right. Mike?
No question.
Okay, thank you. Dane?
No.
Okay, Sue?
Just a question of Jean. Did the Design and Review Committee have any concern about the height?
No, the height is within the bylaw.
Of the sign?
The height is within what's allowed in the bylaw of 18 feet. So they don't need any special... They don't need a special permit for the height. It actually complies.
The bylaw allows the sign area of 50 square feet, right?
The air...
And they're asking for 89.56.
Right. So, yeah, so you just...
Five six.
You just asked me about the height, though. The height complies. So the square footage, no. They just deferred to the Planning Board on that.
Any other questions, Sue?
Yeah, I'm just wondering rationale. Because I know that we have tried to maintain signage in our town. And I'm just wondering if there is a reason other than desire for it to be so many more square feet, from 50 feet to 89.56 square feet?
No, actually, they did not express concern. And as I mentioned earlier, it was very consistent with the square footage that was recently approved for petro-gas. And they were either 78 or 98. I don't have that right on me. So it's very consistent with...
Jean, you talked about yesterday. It was 79 square feet for petro-gas. And they're asking for 89 here.
Thank you, Dane. So it's fairly consistent with what has recently been approved. And if you notice, there's a lot of space on the bottom that is just covered with the stone and the siding materials. So the signage itself seems very reasonable to me for the speeds that people are traveling and the amount of people that will be coming there. And it's also very consistent with what has recently been approved. So they did not express concerns, and I don't have any concerns with the request either.
So the square footage, they're also counting the bottom support?
That's...
As part of the square footage?
That's right.
Or just the signage?
It's the rectangle that fits... Yeah, it's the total square footage of the rectangle.
Okay. I just needed to ask. Thank you.
Okay, fine. Thank you. And I don't have any questions. So Jean, on page three of your report, you've listed nine areas that we need to address. Do we have a particular motion for that that we should make? Sue, grant this?
Mr. Chairman, may I please interrupt?
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify that the square footage, the 89 square footage, is just the branded rectangle. But the structure itself, 18 feet tall by nine and a half feet wide, is 171 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, the bylaw requires that the area be calculated by the rectangle that you draw around the branding. And so...
Jean, the form of the motion, the special permit?
The form of the motion would be to grant the special permit for the signage requested by Pilot Travel Center may be granted because it is consistent with subparagraphs 1, 6, 7, 8, and 9 in the signed bylaw of the town of Sturbridge, Chapter 22.
Great, very good. Do we have such a motion, please? No move. And that's... Russell, was that you?
That's Chris.
It's Chris.
Russell, second.
Okay, Chris made the motion. Russell, second. Okay, great. Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brad, and Lance.
Thank you all.
How do I get my screen back? You got it back. Okay.
Okay, next on the...
May I ask a question of Jean? It's a little late. I realize that. But all the lighting on the building, is it out... Is it like the duck neck lighting versus interior illumination?
So the lighting over the signage is goose neck lighting. The, you know, kind of what we see on most of the buildings in town. There are some instances where there's LED lighting, like under the soffits and under the entryway. So there's a combination, but the decorative lighting is all the goose neck lighting.
And the signage itself is not illuminated?
No, that's correct.
Thank you.
Externally illuminated, right?
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a review of a conceptual 55-plus manufactured housing community proposed at 30 Main Street and 25 Fisk Hill Road. And Justin and John Stelmark will be introducing this. Jean, do you have anything to say before we start?
Yes. So we've actually been working with the Stelmarks for, I would say maybe about a year ago, we met the Stelmarks, and they came to us with the concept idea of building a manufactured home community. And this is up on the property that is behind Edwards Gas. And it's the same location that there was a 40B proposed at one time. And also, there was an assisted living proposed at one time. So the Stelmarks came in, and they met with staff at our Land Use Division meeting, I think twice, and started to work on a conceptual plan, and we provided feedback. And then COVID hit in March, so we were unable to do anything for some time. And then a couple of weeks ago, we were able to have a virtual meeting with the staff to look at their latest version of the conceptual plan. We felt that they've come pretty far with it and that it would make sense for them to get feedback from the Planning Board and Conservation Commission before they finalize their plans. So here with us this evening are John and Justin Stelmark, and I think somebody from McClure is here. Justin, is somebody with you or is it just you?
I see Chris McClure on the call, so... I know Pete was on vacation this week.
Okay.
In the background here.
All right. Chris, do you want us to allow you to share your screen? Do you want Janay to put up the plan? What would you like?
Justin, are you able to do the screen?
Yes, I have it up with you. If you want to allow me to share the screen.
Okay, sure. All right, where is Justin? Under John? I think they're sharing. Big presenter. Okay, Justin, you should be able to share your screen now. There we go.
All right. Okay, so everybody can see that? Okay, so I'm Justin Stelmark, and my father, John, is here next to me. And then, like Jean said, Chris McClure is on the phone just to be able to answer any engineering questions. We wanted to take this opportunity not only to present our conceptual plan, but also just to meet the board, because we've never worked with Sturbridge before, and just to allow you to get to know us a little bit. Just to give you a quick, quick background on myself. I went to Northeastern University, worked itself in construction for six years after graduating. And now I've been back working with my father, John, for the last six years, not only running and operating our current manufactured housing communities, but also being involved in two 55-and-old developments that we're currently working on, one in Lester and one in Auburn. So I'll let John just give a quick history and background on himself before we... Uh, so I'll let John just give a quick history and background on himself before we jump into the plan.
Um, I'm currently owner and operator of Emerson Homes and Emerson Realtors and located in Auburn, Mass. Like Justin said, I've been in the manufacturing home business for so long that I wasn't told that business when I was born in, in a manufactured home community back in nineteen fifty-eight. Um, so I've been in it literally my entire life. Um, we think it's a, uh, uh, it's, it's industry has come a long way. We've seen, I've seen many, many changes in this industry over the years, all for the positive. And we think, uh, that this community, that we're proposing, uh, would be an asset to the Town of Sturbridge.
So on, on your screen now, you can see the latest conceptual plan that we have. Um, we've kind of just highlighted it in four colors, um, to show the board what we were thinking as far as a phasing approach. Um, right now, if this plan works as they has is, we'd be looking to build this in four phases. Uh, it would all be contingent on what we've been calling Matt Saucic's subdivision road, which I don't know if you can see if my mouse moves off the screen, but right where the blue section starts here, this is the subdivision road or the end of the subdivision road that would need to be built prior to us developing our parcel. Um, which Matt is working on all of his plans with the water engineering right now to hopefully submit those to the board in the next month or so, I believe. Uh, so when you get into our plan, we would have a community building right up front uh, that would be just off of our proposed entrance. Uh, there would be a, a parking area that we would most likely use that as our office, not only for sales, but also for running the community. Um, and then you would come down into the community and have phase one, two, three, and four. And up top, we, we would have to work with the Town of Southbridge, which we know Matt has spoken with and Pete from McClure has spoken with, um, for an emergency access that would come out up on. I forget the name of the road that's on top of the hill. I don't know if you remember the name of it, Jean. Uh, but that would be for emergency access only for, for beer. So again, this was just to present, present this to the board, get it in front of everybody, um, to start to get feedback and, and see what the board thinks of the plan. Um, if everything went ideally in a perfect world, uh, we, we would be willing to potentially move right to definitive plan to help move this along. Um, but that would obviously be, uh, at the discretion of the boards and, and the feedback that we get. Um, as far as these homes, um, it would be only fifty-five and older. Uh, we do see them, manufactured homes in general, as a very affordable way to, um, allow somebody to own a home, especially if it's town size. Statistically speaking, manufactured homes, because they're built in factories, because of less site work involved, typically, um, that their price per square foot is significantly less than an equivalent home, a regular stick-built home. Uh, so that allows us to pass those savings onto any potential customers. Uh, once the project was fully built out, or it has, we're actually building it as, as people were to move in and purchase homes, we would maintain ownership of the community. Uh, we would run it and, and own it privately. Uh, there would be typically how it works is there's a, a land fee that's paid, a monthly fee for the residents to pay, that's your sewer, your water, your real estate taxes, trash removal, uh, money for we can maintain the facilities and maintain the roads, plowing of the roads. Um, so it's, it's really convenient for the customer as well, um, and the residents as well, because it allows them to pay one monthly fee and all of their main living needs are covered except for their individual utility bills. Um, when the project was fully built out, again, we would maintain and we would, um, take care of all of the roads, the infrastructure that's required. There's really no burden on the town as far as that's concerned. Uh, the main thing that the town would have to provide would be the emergency vehicles, uh, police, ambulance, and, and fire. Everything else would be our responsibility to run and to maintain. So that's kind of our quick intro in a nutshell of, of what we're proposing. Um, so I don't know if there's any questions that the board has or, or comments? Or if there's anything we-
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go through the board and see what questions they have. But one thing, from my review of the drawings, um, it looks like you have overall, there'll be sixty-five units when it's completely filled out?
Yes, that's, that's again, assuming that this stays, um, as is. Uh, once we get more into development phase with McClure, um, we have to really take a look at the grading on a lot of these lots. Uh, because there, it, it is a, a chilly site and there is a steep grade change between the proposed entrance and, and the top up in, on the Southbridge side. Um, so as we move along through that, um, that could change slightly. Once we begin to look at the grading, we'll also include Chesler Construction, who does all of our major site work for us, to have them included in all the discussions too. Uh, just to get their feedback and input as we proceed with McClure. But the goal would be to maintain this plan and to have, um, I think it's sixty-four, sixty-five sites.
Great, very good. Okay, I'll go through the, uh, board now to see if we have any questions. Sue, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. What is the, um, projected monthly fee for the rental of the land property and the utility, I mean, not water, sewer, plowing, trash, all those things? What is the fee that you, um?
We don't really have a number yet, um, just because it's so soon into the process. Um, what, like, what we can say is that, you know, a few communities that we own and similar communities that are built, being built right now, um, in other areas of the state where we know the owners, um, or involved with them. It is typically looking, you know, mid-five hundreds, um, maybe up to six hundred, but we typically don't see that. It also depends on what type of services you're going to offer. Um, if we get into potentially offering, say, grass cutting for everybody to help maintain it, obviously that increases the, the cost. If you're looking just at the bare bones, uh, real estate, water, sewer, trash removal, snow plowing, sanding, and maintenance of the, of the common areas, you're most likely looking mid-five hundreds would be a, a guess to be able to, to say that to you tonight.
Okay. Is, is that similar to what is being, um, asked of the people in the Auburn facility?
Auburn is smaller, and I, in our one community that we have, it's strictly in Auburn. It's a smaller community. Um, it is a little bit lower. Um, lots in, are smaller because that community was built back in the eighties. So less road to maintain, less water lines, sewer lines to maintain, uh, which factors into it. Um, and then the other community that we have that's on the Worcester Auburn line, uh, that's similar to, again, a little bit less, but with a lot of the lots that we have down here being that it was built by my grandfather, built by John back in the sixties, seventies, and eighties, and even in the fifties, those are much smaller homes and again, the lots are a lot smaller. So what those communities represent is not really what this community or what we would try to build with this community. Um, this we would see more as probably a lot of double-wide homes, uh, with and without garages. Uh, the lots are bigger, they have seventy-five feet of frontage. Uh, so this community here would be more what we in the industry envision these communities to look like nowadays, uh, and how, how the industry has evolved.
Thank you. The other, one other question. Um, currently, um, I know that our wastewater treatment plant has the capacity to, to have hookups. And I'm wondering if you've even got, if you've even looked into the water and sewage, uh, disposal process in that area of town?
Yes, we, we, Jean has allowed us to meet with the land use committee, I think it was two or three weeks ago. Matt Saucic was also on that call. Um, and it was determined that, I believe, Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, um, sewer that goes from this side of town to Southbridge already, that the municipal agreement, we would exceed that. Matt's road in general would exceed that, um, and, but there was enough flow and enough capacity for the water. Uh, for the sewer, Matt has since, and we've had another discussion with Jean in, um, the DPW and I believe in, Chan, Moody was on the call as well, that way back when, when Matt first was developing this land, um, he has, has, currently has an agreement with the Town of Southbridge, um, that Southbridge would receive all of the sewer from this development, whatever it may be. Um, and that was something that Matt had paid for back in the early two thousands. Uh, so right now, Matt is working with the Town of Southbridge and with Jean and the Town of Sturbridge to kind of work through that process to see how Southbridge would accept that.
Has it, has the discussion been, um, have you discussed the possibility of the pump station that could be placed in that area so we could divert the sewage into our own wastewater management system rather than paying the fee to Southbridge and incorporate that fee into the pumping station?
As far as-
I've spoken to a couple engineers. I understand it's about a hundred thousand to put in a pumping station.
Was that a question for, for-
For you? Yes.
Has that discussion happened yet as far as pumping any sewage back into the Town of Sturbridge? Um, not that I've been involved in.
Okay, that might be something that needs to be considered because we do have the capacity and we have, um, developed our wastewater management capacity to, um, to permit this type of growth. So I'd just like that to be considered in the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Dane, do you have any questions?
Um, a comment first. I love this. Um, thank you for bringing it to town. I think it does fill a need. I agree with that. Um, manufactured homes, I'm not too familiar with myself. I know, uh, that part of town got a little bit of wind a few years ago and left a small scar. I'm curious about the wind, the wind rating, um, the constructability, how these actually sit on the foundations and are secured?
Mm-hmm. So, uh, typically how they're done, um, first, you need to have a HUD license, which I, which I currently do hold. Um, it's similar to a construction supervisor license, but it's specifically for installing manufactured homes. Uh, the homes are brought in, you, we will level the area that we need and we pour what they call a haunch pad is typically how you do it. There are a couple different ways that these homes can be secured and set up through the ground. Um, right now, the most economical way is the haunch pad, which is basically a six-inch pad with haunches between twelve inches and eighteen inches deep, all the way around the perimeter. Uh, sometimes there's rigid insulation that's needed there too for frost protection. Um, that is all prepared before the home is, it comes on site, the home shows up on site. It's blocked with, um, eight-by-eight, cinder block, eight-by-eight by sixteen cinder blocks, which is given to us on a plan from the manufacturer, um, as far as the, the spacing of those and where they need to be placed. I believe, but we would verify, um, unless you know, uh, if, if Sturbridge is in a wind zone one, um, area. Wind zone two down on the Cape, um, and along the coast. What that dictates is how, how often you have to put these tie-downs on the homes and, and how many you need. Uh, so in a wind zone one, it's typically every eight to nine feet. Those are wrapped around the main I-beam of the, uh, home and then they are lag bolted and anchored with special tracks, as special straps that are all certified by the manufacturer, um, right through the concrete pad.
Perfect, thank you. Um, okay, Dane. Water and sewer, we talked about that, but for fire protection, you envision hydrants throughout this development, all the way to the top?
Yes, whatever the fire department would require. Um, they, they have seen the initial concept, but we haven't gotten into that much detail yet. Like, yes, whatever the fire department would require for hydrants, we would provide.
Would the roadway also include a sidewalk for some exercise for these guys?
Yep, yep. What, what we had initially discussed with Jean, I believe the bylaw for this, um, allows down to a minimum of, a minimum of a twenty-foot wide road. Uh, we had originally had thought that if we would go to like a twenty-four-foot wide road with no sidewalk. Uh, Jean said that the Town of Sturbridge really does like sidewalks, so we anticipated and kind of had discussed with Jean in, in one conceptual discussion of a twenty-foot wide road with a five-foot sidewalk on the backside of the bar, on one side of the road.
Yeah, I think a sidewalk would be a nice feature. Um, and you mentioned the tie-in to Southbridge, but have you had any conversations like this with them yet?
Not yet. It was left with, um, that Matt Saucic would handle that because that not only affects our proposed subdivision, that affects his whole subdivision as a whole, uh, where he would have proposed one additional residential lot, and I believe it's two commercial lots. So we were leaving that up to Matt, and I know we did talk to him briefly this morning, um, that he did have those conversations and that Pete from McClure was involved, but Pete being on vacation this week, we couldn't get an update from him for the meeting.
Sure. It looks good. Uh, that's all my questions for now. I look forward to seeing more.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I think conceptually, uh, I, I like this plan. Uh, I like its location, close proximity to Harrington, EMS services close by. I think, uh, in terms of housing needs, it fits our community well. Uh, and I think my, my colleagues here hit on some of the big points. Sue's water and sewer concern was, was really the only thing that came to mind for me. It's something we need to know a little bit more about. And, uh, I love Dane's comment about sidewalks. I think that, that makes a lot of sense. So no other questions.
Great, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to continue on Dane's line of inquiry there because I, I'm not very familiar with fifty-five-plus communities like this either, especially dealing with manufactured homes. So can you, so when you, when you say manufactured homes, i- i- is it, is it, is it a fixture on the land or is it immovable? Is it mobile? What, what exactly? I'm just trying to understand whether it's personal property or real property.
Yep. So manufactured home, we, we don't like to use the term anymore. It, it's not even the term that you're supposed to use, but is what used to be a mobile home. Pre-nineteen seventy-six. It does go up on wheels, it's built in a factory. Um, mainly right now, we get most of our homes out of Pennsylvania, but Pennsylvania, New York, that, that area is where most of the factories, uh, are. The home is brought over the road by, by tractor trailers and then it is set on the blocks as I described earlier. The wheels and, and sometimes the axles also, minimum of the wheels are taken off. Um, so is it technically mobile? The answer is yes. Do these homes ever move once they are in place, tied down and secured? The answer is no. Uh, they do become a fixture for the land. Uh, in Massachusetts, they are considered personal property. Um, so that's one of the benefits, um, to being able to build a community and live in a community like this is, going back to the, the land fee, we do pay real estate taxes on the community as a whole, um, but that all gets to be wrapped up into that one monthly lot fee for the residents. So the re, the residents would own their particular home, um, anything that were to, say, go wrong with the home, um, after a warranty period that we would give to them, obviously being, being a brand-new home. Uh, that would be their responsibility to fix and maintain. Anything on the outside of the home, that would be, you know, as far as in the roadways or, or water lines or sewer lines underground, that falls on the owner or operator or us to own and maintain. It's all spelt out within the, we call it the blue book. It's there, manufactured housing association, or manufactured housing rules and regulations, uh, as far as where the owner or operator is responsible and where the homeowner is responsible.
Very good. Jeff, here you go? Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, totally. So the, they'll, they'll purchase, the prospective buyers will purchase just the physical structure and you'll, you'll own the land and effectively a- act like a landlord? Like a, like a kind of like the, like, like on a condominium association? I guess condominium, you'd own the, you'd, you'd own the interior of the, of the unit anyways, but that's a little different, but, all right, okay.
I- i- it's very similar to a condo association. Um, the main difference being that John and I are the, the association that runs and maintains and is responsible for collecting rent and, and fielding everybody's calls and concerns and, and dealing with any issues that come up.
Right. Yeah, Jeff, I mean, um, you know, the Kelly Road Retirement Community is very similar to this. So Jean has a lot of information on that, so she can provide you, you know, information on the experience we've had over the years because they, they've been part of the community for many years now. But she can provide more information that might, you know, help with some of those questions.
Yeah, good, okay. I'll, I'll have to touch base with her then.
All right, thank you. Great. Sure. Russ?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Uh, could you explain how the, uh, over fifty-five works? Is that a deed restriction or what, what enforces that? So, um, to ensure that we're not going to get school-aged kids coming from this development? How does that work?
So you could probably speak better on that. There's two or three different ways.
Basically, yeah, there's basically under Matt's law, there's three different ways you could run a retirement community. Uh, one is called an eighty-twenty rule, which means that you- that you must maintain a minimum of eighty percent of your entire residence, not my home, but res- um, population, um, for example, you may get a husband and wife that comes in that wants to buy a home, so the husband is fifty-six, but the wife is only fifty, um, they still would be considered retirement community, um, you know, residents, uh, of the community, uh, another way that Mass law allows, um, the, uh, manufactured homes, uh, to be run as a retirement community is I think it's the age of sixty-two or older, um, in order to qualify to move in, um, to the community and that, that's basically, yeah, we, you know, we would have a set of rules and regulations which are approved and put together by the Attorney General's Office under chapter one forty, um, and it would state right in the rules and regulations, uh, current communities that we own now that are retirement communities, the process is simple, when somebody comes in and applies an application to the park, uh, we take a, a photo ID, um, prove their age and then go through the approval process of, of, uh, you know, becoming residents of the park. Uh, and that, that's basically, yes, um, we, you know, there wouldn't be any children, um, that, you know, as far as young couples may be allowed, it's strictly for the retirement community as itself, as, as we've run a couple of them now.
And, and to go beyond on that a little bit as I was thinking about it, I don't think there would be any issue, I would have no objections to doing what we did up at Windmill Estates, which is a fifty-five and older condo, um, community that we're wrapping up building, um, hopefully this year, is we could go back and reread the rules and regulations, but we did put a stipulation in there that I believe it's nobody under thirty-five-
Right.
-is allowed to live in the home, um, that number of, I believe thirty-five was, was used because with the attorney that helped us write those rules and regulations, um, for that condo association, um, they felt that that was a good number with their experience of that would be a good age difference between somebody that's fifty-five and has a husband or wife that's younger than them, but it was an old enough age where it would ensure that there was no children that would be in the community because that was a, a big question that the town offered had when we were going through that approval process. So doing something along the lines of that, I'm not sure if that could be put on the deed, um, but to get some kind of restriction, make sure that there are no children here and it does maintain a fifty-five and older community, um, we would be willing to, to discuss that and, and, and come up with a solution.
Hey, um, the next, my next point is on the cul-de-sac, I know you said you're working with the fire department on the hydrant locations and everything, I would encourage you to work with them also to make sure the radius of those cul-de-sacs is enough for the fire trucks to turn around-
Mm-hmm.
-in that area, um, and touching on the basis, to continue the discussion on the sidewalk, is there any consideration, and I know you said you got some topographical issues there, uh, to include some, some additional recreation activities like, uh, maybe a tennis court or a bocce ball court or horseshoes or stuff like that, I think that would enhance the, the, uh, facility itself also.
That we haven't really looked into yet, uh, what we do know from our experiences with, in operating and building these communities and just by all their condo associations, most times those facilities we find don't get used, um, there was actually the condo association that John and, and his partner were building and were wrapping up in Lester, there was a community building that was on site and the residents actually ha- asked to have it removed because they didn't want to have to pay to maintain it, um, in, in to use it, and one other community that we currently own and operate, we had bocce courts, uh, we went to all the residents and asked them, do you want us to fix these and because they were a little bit of air and spent some money to fix them up for everybody and the overwhelming majority of people said no, uh, we'd rather just have you grassy area for, you know, in outdoor space, um, but that's something that it, I, we would want to figure out how we could get a feeling from potential residents on what they may want, um, but that is something maybe if by the clubhouse that we could incorporate.
Okay. I thought I got some-
Okay, great, thanks, Russ. Russ, do you have any questions?
We, we do, we do have an open space area that would remain really just woods was, was our initial thought, um, up in Southbridge, because Southbridge does not allow this type of community, um, that's why all of our lots stop on the Southbridge Sturbridge line. So there is this section up in here that we would be also purchasing from that, um, that would remain open land, uh, that potentially could be used for something in the future if residents did want something.
Yeah, and, and on the clubhouse, we haven't completed design on the office clubhouse area, um, but, you know, that's something that we find is, is a lot of community driven by the people, uh, the residents themselves, uh, if you provide a space where they can do, you know, Pilates classes, uh, yoga classes, uh, things like that in the clubhouse is what we were promised to leave an open area for, um, those type of activities.
Thank you.
Very good, uh, Chris, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I think everybody hit on the high points, my, my own question would be, uh, I realize we're still in the very, very preliminary stages of this, but what, what kind of a timeline would it take, say, on, on, on day one, um, for each phase to, to get to completion and, and then for the whole project to be completed?
A lot of that would be, again, based on, on the approval of, of Matt's road, um, as we work through this process, um, our thoughts were always, let's do our conceptual meetings as we're starting to, to get to do now, um, get input from as many town boards and town officials as possible, uh, so when we know Matt is at a point, um, with his approval process and is at least beginning to build his road, we are now comfortable enough to move forward with our plans and our design with McClure, um, once we actually start building, that's again, we'll get more of a feel on how long it'll take for each phase when we involve Chesler Construction more, um, these four phases roughly equal out to say around a thousand feet of road, um, per phase, in ideal situation, Chesler could come in and he could build the whole phase of road within one building season, um, is what we've experienced in the past, depending on how much site grading we want to do as he's moving along, um, that could be extended a little bit longer, uh, but again, the goal would be to get Chesler in, get Chesler building and then have hopefully homes on order with, with, with residents, um, so as soon as we get to basic code of blacktop, we have those homes coming on site within two to three days of blacktop being put in, so then we can start the next process of setting the homes up, um, a single section home will typically take between two and three weeks by the time you get all, everything tied down, um, all the outside work done and, and actually have all your inspections done and, and ready for somebody to move in, from the day it shows up on site with a double section home without a garage, you're looking at probably four to five weeks, um, to get through that same process, um, so it would be as fast as we can get in and we can get building, we're ready to, and, and excited to move forward with this, um, along with the town and, and, and to get moving on this process, um, so if we were to get our approvals in, say, at the springtime, just to use a, a timeframe and Matt was already approved and building his road, we could foreseeably see homes being delivered on site by the end of next year, is what we would hope for.
Very good. Thank you. Very good, very good concept here, I think that, um, because it is very preliminary here, I just want to go with Gene, the way it's laid out now, it, it really complies fully with the bylaws, there's no specific special permits or anything required or in the approval process, anything we should be looking forward to or?
So actually, um, this is probably an embarrassingly outdated portion of our bylaw, but this property's in the rural residential zone and it's actually allows for what's still termed trailer coach park and, um, we will update that with the codification process that we're working on right now, but under the trailer coach park, it actually refers you to the general bylaws of, um, chapter four of our general bylaw and that's where we lay out that, um, they need to get a license from the Board of Health, which is, you know, an annual thing and it lays out the lot size requirements and things like that. So the initial plan did not comply with this, however, the Stelmacs have revised the plan and now, um, what we have appears to be something that meets all of the, uh, requirements of the bylaw at this time, so of course, we'd have to go through stormwater management review and, you know, water and sewer connection, but, um, I look at this as a, um, fairly by right process, I'm trying to find the section in my bylaw right now, I think it may be a special permit under rural residential that allows for this, so it would be with the planning board. So it would be similar to maybe looking at a subdivision plan, only a, a little bit less, but basically the same kind of standards, the grades of the roadway, the sub, the sidewalks, things like that. And I should mention, oops, sorry, Charlie, I should mention that the subdivision coming from Main Street actually has to be approved either concurrent with this or prior to this because the Stelmacs need to access the residential land to be able to build this, um, community, so, you know, as they said, Matt Saucic may be about a month away from coming back to the planning board with a subdivision plan for that, the roadway coming in, so they are right now doing a traffic study and I know McClure's been working on plans for them as well, so I would think it'll be, you know, if we did them concurrently, it might take a couple of months to get through both application processes.
Very good, well, thank you, well, thank you for, for coming in and, uh, good luck with the project.
May I ask a question, Charlie?
Sure.
Okay, I am just questioning the square footage of each unit, is there going, going to be a low end as to, um, what is, what is planned for this community, you know, as far as size goes?
As far as a low end, um-
Yeah, 'cause I, I've seen them one thousand square feet all the way up.
Yeah, so what we are, that's an idea that we're still kind of tossing around, um, and as we go through this, this process, again, it, it will, we know it'll, it'll kind of fall, our initial thoughts were three potential styles that we would offer, uh, one being sixteen by sixty, somewhere in there, a single section home, which gets you to just under a thousand square feet, nine hundred and sixty square feet, um, and, and then getting into double section homes of twenty-four by forty-eight, twenty-four by fifty, twenty-six by fifty, somewhere in there, so you're looking, you could say anywhere from a thousand square feet up to thirteen hundred, twelve to thirteen hundred square feet, depending on what the market ended up dictating, but our initial thoughts were three main styles, the single section home that we think would sit parallel with the road, um, to allow it to look more like a ranch style home, uh, and then a double section home that would sit with, say, the twenty-four, twenty-six foot lawn wall parallel with the road and then going forty-eight to fifty feet to the lot, um, that type of home without a garage and then potentially that same style home with an attached garage, uh, were our, our initial thoughts, um, yeah, also on top of that, it is part of one of the, the bylaws for the trailer coach park is that each one of these lots would have off-street parking for cars-
Right.
-so they would all have their own individual drive.
Okay, thank you.
In the main factory now, I mean, they actually go and they, they manufacture triple bikes, uh, where a, a home comes in three pieces and three sections, so you, you can get up to, you know, easily twenty-eight by seventy-five if, if somebody wants that size of a home.
Mm-hmm.
So it, there's a variety.
And will those options be available?
We, uh, we haven't gotten that far, if somebody came, and we were, and we were through this and we were building and somebody said, I want to build a, a twenty-eight by seventy-five foot home, we would certainly entertain it, um, I don't think we would go to market with that style home, we, I think that's going to be a marketable home for what a fifty-five and older community is looking for, uh, right now where we build with the condos, we're anywhere from eleven hundred and fifty square feet to, we do have a few people that go up to two thousand square feet, but we find people are between eleven hundred and fifty square foot homes, um, two beds, two bathrooms is, is what we find is most popular, so we would gear it somewhere towards that when we get to the time to market this to the public, uh, but we would kind of then also let the public dictate what they're looking for as they start to come in and, and we work through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Well, very good, and that just brings up one question I had in my mind here, um, do the setback requirements still a- apply to each one of these lots with a manufactured home?
No, it, it actually has, no, actually it doesn't, they have their own requirements for lot size, the lots themselves have to be seventy-five feet wide and a hundred feet deep and, um, they're, it doesn't specify the setback requirements, so it's how they, they're situated.
How about bigger for lots, that's fine, okay, great, well, thank you again for coming in, uh, and good luck with the project.
Thank you very much, you did your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have an introductory meeting for a proposed equine, um, center, um, Wingland Horse Park LLC, uh, to be located on the eastly side of Route eighty-four, and I believe that, um, Armin is here to, uh, present this, Gene, do you have anything you'd like to introduce before he begins?
Um, yes, actually, uh, Attorney Bob George is on the meeting as well and I believe their engineer, Miss-
Oh, good.
-Mr. Burke, I believe, is here this evening and, um, this process, as you know, we've spoken very briefly about it, but the, they've presented to the Board of Selectmen a couple of meetings ago and the actual process for this would be the Board of Selectmen actually have to approve the location for the facility and then town meeting would need to approve the zoning bylaw that would allow this to happen and the gaming commission also would need to approve this, so it's a kind of multi-stage process that, uh, we need to go through if the Board of Selectmen determines this is an appropriate venture for the town of Sturbridge. So we do have some slides here and also some conceptual plans and if, um, Attorney George could let us know which one he would like to start with, I'll have Janay share the slides on her screen and they can go through their, what they're proposing and where they are in the process.
Sure, thank you and thank you for agreeing to meet with us tonight, we have engineer Timothy Burke is here, I'm not sure if he wants to go through the renderings, um, first or, uh, that, that way you have an idea of exactly what we're talking about or, uh, where it's going to be and what kind of infrastructure and, and whatnot we're going to have to do, um, but maybe before we go, maybe we want to, Armin, do you want to introduce yourself and just talk a little bit about the project and then maybe we can go to the renderings after that?
Okay, um, uh, thank you very much for taking the time, uh, for this presentation, I've been, uh, an active horse person for most of my life, uh, and, uh, ridden most of my life and I've been actively involved in breeding and racing, uh, thoroughbreds for almost forty years, I was on order directors for the Mass Thoroughbred Breeders Association for about thirty years and, uh, I built a horse farm in Medfield about, um, a number of years ago, so we keep some of our horses here and some of them when they're racing there in different states, uh, I also stood, stood the leading stallion for many years here in Massachusetts, um, this would be a horse park where racing is a central part of it, but in reality, the amount of days that we would be racing is relatively minimal, uh, and I'll tell you the reason why, uh, and then there would be the horse park itself where we would be able to have various types of horse activities, but it wouldn't be thoroughbreds, it, it would be show horses, dressage horses, et cetera, and then the plan would be to have a retirement home for thoroughbreds. And then the plan would be to have a retirement home for thoroughbred horses, which is something very important to me, to ensure that horses, after they're done racing, would have a facility that could accommodate that. Along with that, because it's such a large parcel, what I would like to have happen is to interact with some of the town agencies or some of the groups to see if there are activities that the town would like to see there. Because, again, getting back to racing, realistically, in the first couple of years, I can't see how we would be racing more than maybe four or five weekends in the spring and possibly an equal amount in the fall. And that is dictated because of the racehorse population and the various tracks such as in New York and Pennsylvania, et cetera. So, even if somebody wanted to race six months out of the year, that would be virtually impossible. When Suffolk Downs was racing, the last three or four years, the only amount of racing that they could conduct was a festival-type racing and I think they only raced for about three or four weekends in the whole year. And that was a facility that was designed to run year-round. So, the idea would be to race, if we could ever get to the point where we could have a month of racing in the spring and a month of racing in the fall, would be phenomenal, where we could probably work with, you know, someplace like Saratoga or something where we would run a period of time before they were running or after and then see what, how that would work out. So, that's the idea with the racetrack itself. And then the show grounds would accommodate all different types and that would run basically from spring through fall. And then there would be, you know, buildings, there wouldn't be a lot of buildings. There'd mostly be, you know, one central building that would accommodate maybe 400-500 people. We haven't finished designing that, but you wouldn't need a huge building to do everything that we're talking about. So, I would, you know, a couple of the things that are very important to me is building a beautiful facility and building a very safe racetrack. So, with that thought, we, I've already arranged for some of the top people in racing that build racetracks and they're doing an analysis and we'll be working on that. Tim Burke is here, who's my architect, and he would have been laying out, you know, the physical layout. We may have to change that because in order to compete in the racing world, you really need one mile oval, I'm going to say a dirt track, but in reality, I'm hoping to build a synthetic track because a synthetic track has been proven to be far safer for racehorses. And along with that, there would be a seven-eighths of a mile turf track, which is grass. So, you can just imagine, it takes up a considerable amount of space and as such, the architects and engineers have to work with the topography and the, you know, the ground itself. Our analysis with the engineers and architects at this point shows that it can be done. You can't have something on a steep incline. It has to be relatively flat. It can underlay a little bit, but it basically has to be flat. So, there are, you know, I'm going to say restrictions or things that you have to ensure that we're able to overcome. It looks like we can do that. So, I would, I can answer questions for you now or if you would like to have Tim make, show you some of the design, whatever you would like.
Yeah, I think, Armin, that it would be good to do that, to see the design, see the location, because, you know, being the planning board, a lot of the questions, you know, we'll have will be relating to the site and, you know, compliance with the ultimate bylaw that would be passed. So, if you'd like to turn over and show some of the details of the site, the location, the access and so forth, I think that would be good.
Okay, Tim, can you do that?
Sorry, I think he has the slides or I have a, give me the screen, I can put it up.
Do you want us to give you the screen, Tim, or do you want?
If you have it, that's fine, if you want to put it up.
Janay can put it up. Do you want the presentation or the renderings put up?
Yeah, there's, I think, five or six PDFs that, it's all in one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were a couple of different versions back at the render, yeah, I think that's fine.
Is that the one you want, Tim?
Yes, please, that's great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So, this is a Google Earth view of the site and the red line indicates the boundary of the site. It's right on the Connecticut border. To your left is Route 84 and as it goes from Union up towards Stirbridge. At the top of the property is where the recycle center is from the town and those two ponds there. And along the southeast side is Breakneck Road, which is, almost wants to be a road, but does need some work before it can become a real road. We can go to the next slide. Yes, so we did go to the site and we had a wetlands person identify the edge of the wetlands, which you see in the light green color here. And the site has a general topography that goes up towards the top of the sheet, the grade rises in that direction. And again, you can see at the bottom, the state line between Stirbridge and Union there. We could go to the next slide, I'll show you. This is the initial conceptual drawing for the site and this is the, in the center, you can see the oval track that Armon mentioned for the mile race, the brown one would be the synthetic track that he mentioned. And then inside that oval is the turf track, which is seven-eighths of a mile in length. The, in the wetlands in this case are shown in the white color and then there's two layers of the 50-foot and 100-foot upper zone that you see there. And these are called wooded marshes. It's not a lot of actual water, but it is wetlands and we, our engineer would work with the conservation commission to, with the design of this. The, on the bottom left, you can see where we are proposing the main entrance, which would come from the Union exit off of 84. It would cross through a small bit of Connecticut and then enter the property at that corner. And then the road would lead up to the gray area there is the location of the clubhouse and there is a enlarged version of that plan on the left-hand side of the sheet that shows the main building for the track. We would have some paved parking there for the average use of it, but then we're showing along 84, a permeable surface that would be used for overflow parking for one of the race days, as Armon mentioned, the handful of race days when there, we would hope that more people would come to the track. On the right-hand side, we have an access road, which would be more like service road from Breakneck Road. That would be where the, we would have barns for the horses and fields for them to exercise or graze and also the, that would be the location of the retirement home for horses that Armon mentioned as well. And then the next slide would show you just some preliminary views of clubhouse that you see on the right, a view from the track and then on the left is another view looking, showing the clubhouse and the racetrack. And then the final slide is just a rendering of showing you, we're looking to do a building that was done in stone and natural materials that would be local to the neighborhood and hopefully blend in with the context of the beautiful natural environment of the site. That's a quick view of the property and project and we're happy to answer any questions.
Good. I'd like to, I'd like to just say a couple of things. The site, that one parcel that we have tied up is 224 acres. We're also in the process of tying up about another 35 acres with a possibility of some additional land as well. But the land that all of this is sitting on is 224 acres. Also, this particular rendering, we did come up with two designs. I don't have the other one because they're basically still working on it, but we wanted to have this design, which is stone, I think looks very, very nice. And then we wanted to have another design that's basically more colonial, is going to look like a lot of the buildings in Stirbridge and so forth. But both of them are going to be, I think, are very attractive and would fit into Stirbridge, you know, what Stirbridge is all about. And I, when we got further along, I naturally want to talk to the town officials to see if, you know, they preferred one or the other. But we'd like to build something very tasteful. I would like to make this, even though it's not racing a lot, I would love to make this really a jewel, something, you know, Saratoga has a lot of character and it's really a very festive event when they're open and the people go there. I would love to make this similar, where families can come and spend a day without going broke. You know, today, when a family tries to go to a sporting event, it costs them a fortune. You know, if you're going to the city of Boston to go to a ballgame, you're going to pay $50, $75 just to park your car. And then after that, you pay a huge entry fee, you pay $10 for a hot dog and by the time you get out of there, you're in debt. I want to make a place where we get young people, families coming, spend the day and not spend a lot of money unless they want to spend some money, but they don't have to. So, this facility that we end up building and maybe we would have some outdoor area attached to it so that you could have events and I've done a lot of work with Boys and Girls Scouts for many, many years and I'd love to get involved with some of the agencies to see if there are activities they would love to have happen here because it is a lot, it's 200 and something acres of land and, you know, it can do different things and, but I'd like to leave that open until we talk more with the town people.
Very good, well, thank you. It looks like a very, very interesting concept. Before I ask the board members for the questions, Jean, you had kind of introduced us a little bit about the process that the Board of Selectmen has to determine that this is a use they would like to have. And you also provided a draft of the agricultural entertainment overlay district. Can you just give a little background on that and what would happen with that if the Board of Selectmen does decide to move forward with this?
Yes, so the zoning bylaw is really in its draft stages, so before the board would be asked to take that up, it would be in its final form. So, we're currently working on that right now with Attorney Bob George and Jonathan Eichman from KP Law and Jeff Bridges and I are working on that. And what would happen if the Board of Selectmen decided that this was an appropriate location for this facility? They've also agreed to be the sponsor of the zoning bylaw. So, then they would pass it back to the planning board for a public hearing and we would review it at that time. So, basically, it would be an overlay, just as envisioned, it would be an overlay district that would allow specifically for this equine park to take place. And it is, you can see from the draft that's proposed, there would be a variety of uses with the horse park with the racetrack being the primary use that would be allowed by special permit. And then there would be a variety of accessory uses that may be permitted as well, things such as maybe there's a restaurant or maybe there's a shop that sells equine equipment or maybe even supplements or feed for horses, different things that are all kind of related to that main mission of the horse park. So, it really is a work in progress right now and it's, we're looking at it to make sure that it kind of, you know, stands the muster of an appropriately crafted zoning bylaw, but also has the types of uses that Mr. Jen Gigiian believes are, you know, essential to successful operation of his horse track, horse park with the racing track if so desired in the town of Stirbridge. So, we've, you know, spent quite a bit of time on that, we still have some work to do on that, but you have the draft as far as it's come so far and we will keep you posted as we work on various revisions to that and we will keep sharing those versions with the board and it may even pay to have a conceptual meeting before a public hearing if we get to that point to iron out any fine details.
Very good, well, thank you very much. All right, Scott, with questions, Chris, do you have any questions? Nope, I think this is very thorough and I'm looking forward to learning more as time passes. Great, thank you. Russ?
Jean, with regards to the bylaw, I didn't hear you say it, to include the retirement home for the horses, so I don't know if that needs to be drafted yet somehow?
Yes, I think all of the uses that are proposed should be included. So, we have one main definition of equine park, I believe, as the draft stands right now and it does include all of those components and I believe the retirement community is in there as well. And if not, you're correct, it should be added.
And is that something we're shooting forward to have on the next annual town meeting? Will be ready?
I think it, you know, it depends on how soon they can do their due diligence and bring back all of the information that the Board of Selectmen will need to make an informed decision about this location. I think if it moves along quickly, it potentially could be ready for even a special town meeting in the winter and if not, certainly the annual town meeting. I think time is of the essence to go to the gaming commission. I know there will be some timeframes associated with that as well.
And just a comment on the preliminary plan is I'm happy to see that the entrance will be off of the Interstate 84 exit, the Union, not going through any of the, you know, obviously Breakneck Road or anything like that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Jeff?
No questions.
Okay, thanks. Mike?
Yeah, I think it's a really interesting idea that would probably likely complement the town pretty well. I don't really have any questions and I look forward to seeing how it progresses.
Great, thank you. Jean?
Yeah, similar comment. I think it's a very interesting idea that would be well-suited for that area in town, but traffic would be kept to a minimum with the rest they propose, which is creative, which I definitely appreciate. The PDFs that we saw Uh, the PDFs that we thought, can we get a copy of those or were those submitted? Maybe I missed those, Jean?
Um, we can print out copies of those. We have those, uh, in PDF, we received those today but we can definitely print copies for any of the members who would like those.
I don't need any more dead trees, but a PDF would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, for the, the retirement of the horses, uh, obviously that's an issue that everybody hears when you talk horse racing. I love the idea that you've addressed it right up front off the bat. How do you envision that being funded? Would there be? I, I, how does that work, I guess?
Okay, um, there are several ways that that would happen. And I'm going to call it, uh, a retirement home because, um, many owners, such as myself, when horses either don't run at the levels that an owner would like or they have physical issues that they're now not suitable for racing. But they are very well-suited for other regiments. There are so many other horse activities that these, these are athletes and they fit in very, very well into other regiments. But the idea would be to bring them to the, uh, retirement home and many of them will spend the rest of their days there. But many of them can be used for massage or hunter jumper or pleasure riding. And normally, most owners, like myself, we just look to find a good home for those horses. But, so we could, uh, bring the horse to the retirement home but if somebody were almost like, well, like with, uh, dogs, like, uh, animal rescue or, uh, uh, whatever, they, many of them are, would be available to, to be given to homes if, if somebody wanted one of them, uh, you know.
It sounds like a very good concept there, um. So Jane, what was the question again? You want to know how they're going to pay for this?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
My big question is, I understand generally with stables, it's a facility that owners provide for their horses to be brought to the stables. For the retirement, would it still be the individual horse owner's responsibility? Or do you envision the entity that maintains the center taking responsibility for the horses?
Yes, uh, no, once the owner, uh, gives it to the home, unless he wants to donate money to it, that, that would be funded by, uh, through the racing and the way we would structure the racing. So to ensure that enough funds would be available to take care of these horses. Now, the, we could run events as well, uh, uh, on the property for, uh, to try to raise additional funding if we so-
Right.
But, um, but basically that's going to be a self-contained facility.
Understood. Okay, that answers that question, thank you. Um, a comment on the bylaw itself, understanding that it's draft. Uh, large scale, can that be hypenated unless there is a very large scale somewhere?
Yes.
That'd be great, thank you. Um, I had a few other comments on that, but I know it's draft, so I won't get into the nitty-gritty until you guys-
Yeah, it'll be referred back to us if, if the Board of Selectmen decides to go forward with this, then it'll be referred, uh, to us for public hearings and all that kind of input at that point.
Definitely. That's, that was one of my comments and questions. Generally, I think it's a very interesting use and, um, you really seem to love horses and I hope you're able to, um, take care of a few. Thank you.
Thank you, very good, thank you. Sue?
I just want to thank, um, Armon for his, um, vision for our town and after reading all the material that was offered to us, I understand your, um, propensity for the horses. And so I, I honor you for taking care of these horses as they retire and for encouraging them in their athletic ability and for bringing it to Stirbridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well, thank you, um, thank you very much for bringing this forward. Um, as has been expressed before, I think it is a, a very interesting and really, uh, a very worthwhile, uh, project and I hope you're able to go forward with it. I think it would be a, a great addition to Stirbridge providing we can get the bylaws and everything to allow it. But it looks, uh, very good and we appreciate you coming forward at this early stage to let us know about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Jean, we have your update?
Yes. All right. So you've probably all noticed that as you ride by three sixty-five Main Street that Caregiver Patient Connection has started to construct their facility. And so we did our, had our pre-construction meeting on July twenty-ninth and they're really moving along. They started, we, that was, um, I believe a Thursday. They started work by that Saturday and they're hoping to have the facility done in ninety days. Um, the interesting thing is we've been receiving a lot of phone calls about the facility but mainly because people think that it's a, um, mobile home or manufactured housing community and they're wondering how they can get housing. So I think the Stellmox are probably right in line with what people are looking for in the town. So that was, that's pretty interesting. Um, the Petrogas project, I've been out there several times in the past few weeks and the project is nearly complete. There's some seeding that has to be done, but it actually looks fantastic. I'd encourage board members to go out there. They're having a little bit of issue with the plant material. Of course, it's been so dry this summer, it's been very difficult. But the fire department did ask that the propane filling area, the, you know, the little tanks you can bring and, you know, get it filled for your grill. They actually, um, requested that it be moved. They didn't like the location where it was originally proposed. They thought it was too not visible enough and they wanted it really right out in the open by the main door. So that was relocated over there and in doing so, they moved the bike rack to kind of the back of the parking lot. So working with them, they've now moved it over to the, I'd say, the side entrance, so it's the entrance facing Route fifteen. But today, when we were out there, um, we noticed the, the bike rack's pretty full. We think a lot of the employees that are working at Dunkin', um, I think it's Dunkin' Donuts there and Burger King may be taking their bikes to work, so they're using it. So we talked about adding another one back in the front of the store where it was originally proposed. Um, the only other thing that's not going to be complete right now is the playground. So if you remember, there was a children's play area and given all the issues with COVID and the extra responsibility they would have of trying to keep that sanitized all the time or perhaps even keeping children off of it if the governor's phasing doesn't allow for it, we didn't think it made a lot of sense to install that right now. So they've put that portion of the project on pause and once we get through this pandemic, they will, um, certainly install that. But I would encourage you all to go out there and look. You'll see some nice, um, big green frogs everywhere. That's, I guess, they're kind of known for in Ireland in their facilities and those are their recycling bins. So just kind of cute, but they've done a really fantastic job. It's nice to see it done and there were really a lot of people at that facility today when I was there. And then, um, the Pine Lake RV Resort is nearly complete or at least complete enough where they'd like to be thinking about opening in a few weeks. And, um, that place honestly will knock your socks off. They've done a fantastic job. It is absolutely beautiful. From the first inspection or site visit that we all made and we saw the condition that it was in to what it is today, it's just really amazing, the transformation. If, um, they've got a little more work to do, but I'm sure when it's complete, if any other board members would like a tour, I could arrange that with Mr. Moreau. I'm sure he'd be more than happy to give you a tour. But, um, absolutely amazing, the amount of, um, money that obviously has gone into that property and just how beautiful it came out. Mr. Blanchard went with me. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Charlie?
No, it is absolutely beautiful. I mean, the architecture, the quality of the construction of the buildings, the layout, it really is beautiful. I, I was very, very impressed by it. I'm sure everyone will be. It's just a, an unbelievably nice facility.
Really is. So they're hoping to open within the next thirty days or so. Um, so it won't be entirely done, but, um, they're hoping to be able to get open first September for, I think Charlie, he said he would stay open through November this year?
Right, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I mean, with all the delays they've had, to be able to continue to do all they did and the quality they did is, is really remarkable.
Yeah, it really is.
Very good. And Jean, our next meeting day is September eighth?
The next meeting day is September eighth and then I just have one, um, quick item that's not on your list but it's the codification project that we've been working on. So for those of you that aren't familiar, that's a process of, we hired a, a third-party company that's actually going through our bylaw and helping us clean it up. So as a bylaw gets amended over time, you, it gets messy. You have inappropriate citations and incorrect, um, numbering, et cetera, um, as well as some very dated sections like Trailer Coach Park. So I have gone through that as has, um, Mr. Bridges, uh, the Chair of the Planning Board, uh, Mr. Blanchard and the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. We've all gone through that. I've compiled a list of questions and I've sent those out to the appropriate boards and departments for a kind of comment or clarification. So I would expect by the September eighth meeting, I'll have a packet for the planning board of items that I would like to go over with you. We need to turn everything back to general code by September eighteenth. So it's, it's a slow tedious process, but they've actually done a really nice job of finding a lot of crazy little errors that we had. So looking forward to moving that process to the next step and that's all I have.
Great. Yeah, when that's completed, um, this general code company has the general bylaws, the zoning bylaws, all the regulations and so forth, all online, all searchable and, uh, it's updated regularly. Uh, there are several hundred communities, I, I think in the state already are doing that or have done it for a while. And so I think when it's completed, you'll really be impressed with, uh, the benefit of having all the, uh, bylaws and regulations in this, uh, general code format on the website. Very good. Okay, next we have old business. Um, Sue, do you have any old business?
No, I don't.
Hey, Dane?
None.
Mike?
Uh, none.
Jeff? Jeff?
Uh-oh.
Okay, no. Russ?
Uh, Jean, if you do schedule another walk-through of the, uh, the new campground, would you let me know?
Of course, and if you want to go down at any time, just let me know your availability and I'm happy to schedule something.
Okay, are you going to do another one before you open?
Yes, definitely. I'll need to go down and do a final.
Well, when you do that, just let me know and I'll, I'll be happy to go with you.
Okay, will do.
As I do.
Okay.
I'll be careful of the speed as well.
Dane and Sue as well?
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, any old business?
No, none.
How about new?
Nope, nothing for me.
Russ, new?
Uh, one thing I'd like to bring up, uh, Sue touched on it last, at our last meeting, um, for discussing it, discussion at a later date, um, is to look at possibly requiring peer view, peer review of large projects for the landscaping plans. And I don't know at, at what point we want to call it a large project versus a small project. But I think, um, you know, in the past, we've had, uh, some pretty expert advice on the, on the landscaping and that's not to take anything away from you, Jean, um, but, uh, when we do get a large project, I think it would, you know, I think we've, I'd like to discuss it at a future meeting, see what the other board members think, uh, to discuss it tonight. Um, but I just think it's something we should look at, uh, that has, uh, a requirement to have that done. To make sure that the, the, all the plants are, you know, for New England, uh, New England, uh, plants, types of plants and material and everything else. I know I'm not an expert at it and, um, you know, looking at it, I'm not sure if any of it's hot, you know? So I'd like to bring that up for, at a later meeting for discussion and see what the rest of the board feels.
Okay, we can certainly do that. Jeff?
Under business.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, none.
Hey, Dane?
Uh, similar to Russ, I noticed on the pilot application, their directional signs were exterior illuminated but via uplight, not downlight. I personally don't like uplighting because it contributes to making it difficult to see things at night. But I don't want to talk about that now and if you want to talk about it in the future, it's just something that jumped out at me on that application.
Okay, good. Sue?
All set.
Okay, great. Very good. Motion to adjourn then? Don't move. Hey, Russ?
That is.
Susan? Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good, thank you all. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.